Good evening, Wareham, and welcome to the Select Board meeting of August 29th, 2023. May I have a roll call, please, Mr. Chadwick?
Tonight, we have myself, Jared Chadwick, we have Ms. Whiteside, Ms. Wertz, Mr. Bessie. We are missing Mr. Slavin and
Nope, he's there.
Oh, take that back, he is there. Um, we do have Mr. Slavin here, we are missing, uh, Mr. Bowen and Mr. Sullivan tonight.
Thank you. Um, I've been told that it's Mr. Bessie's turn for the pledge, Mr. Bessie.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Noah, would you let in? Bob White, please raise your hand, Sharon Frank, please raise your hand, and Matt Stanton, please raise your hand. And before we go to the presentations, I'm going to go to residents' comments. Residents' comments may be made on non-agenda items, and you are limited to a two-minute, um, timeframe. There will be no more than ten minutes of resident comments per meeting, and based on past practice, as well as to avoid violating the open meeting law, Select Board will not respond or comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak under residents' comments? Please raise your hand. I see none. Then we will move on to a certificate of appreciation to Sharon Frank. Sharon, how are you this evening?
Fine, thank you.
Can we see you or not?
Um, I thought so.
There you go.
We can hear you, but we can't see you.
It should be on. It should be on. I've got video started here.
Okay. Um, we don't see you, but can we, can we go forward with the presentation, Sharon?
Sure.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Chadwick, please?
Yes, Ms. Frank. I don't know if you can see that or not.
Yes, I can, thank you.
I want to personally thank you ahead of time, but I'm going to read this out loud as well. Uh, Sharon Frank has tirelessly served Wareham seniors more than a decade. When the town defunded the COA in 2014, Ms. Frank was emphasis behind two initiatives to ensure that seniors in Wareham were taken care of. The first was to create a volunteer-led senior center where she served as chairperson until late 2022, when health concerns caused her to relinquish her chair duties, although she continues to actively serve on the board to this day. Ms. Frank also co-created and still serves as president of Advocates for Wareham Seniors, a nonprofit organization that offers assistance to local seniors in need. Ms. Frank has provided invaluable support to Sharon Rice, COA director. She continues to be a dynamo on behalf of seniors, whether is, excuse me, whether it be stuffing envelopes, helping to organize special events, or just offering a warm smile. Ms. Frank was recently honored by Old Colony Elder Services for volunteering more than 4,000 hours of her time. It is appropriate that this board recognizes and thanks an outstanding volunteer and advocate to the town of Wareham. Sign the Select Board. Thank you very much for all of your volunteer work, that's amazing.
So, Mr. Chadwick, can you pass her the magic of television? Can you pass her the certificate?
Okay, I have it here, thank you very much.
Thank you, Sharon.
As, as, I, I, first of all, I want to thank you for the recognition. Um, and as I have said before, this was not just me, this was a joint operation way back in 2014, and this award and anything else needs to go to all of the people who helped along the way. Some are no longer with us, some have moved on to other boards, but all of us worked very, very hard to get where we are today, and I thank you for the recognition.
Thank you very much for everything that you've done for the town, we very much appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you. The next certificate is to, for Bob White, who is here with us this evening, I'll read this one. Certificate of Appreciation for William R.C. White. Bob White, a retired Colonel from the United States Army Reserves, has been a dedicated advocate for our veterans for many years, and in many ways. He co-chaired the Veterans Day Parade Committee for many years, bringing joy to so many along the parade route honoring our past and present service members. A longtime member of the Wareham Veterans Council, in 2014, he was chair when he focused on ensuring that for Memorial Day as well as Veterans Day, American flags were placed on all veterans' graves in the town cemeteries. He partnered with the schools and volunteers to place the flags and wreaths to help students understand the importance of honoring those who have served in the defense of our country. Bob helped raise residents' awareness of the veterans' memorial boards located on the first floor of Town Hall. He spearheaded an effort to create an oral history of our veterans, recorded by WCTV and archived for posterity. During COVID, when the town was unable to have a Veterans Day parade, he created a virtual parade using WCTV recordings of previous parades that can still be viewed today. Bob's most visible and impressive accomplishment was the shepherding of the visit of the Vietnam Veterans Moving Wall, which came to Wareham from August 7th through August 21st of 2017. This was the culmination of over a year of work and highlighted Bob's ability to engage hundreds of residents to coordinate and plan the event. The event was attended by tens of thousands of people from all over the state. Most recently, Bob has been the man behind the camera for many years of Select Board meetings. It is with gratitude for your dedicated service to the veterans of this town that we humbly offer this certificate of appreciation this 29th day of August, 2023. And I'm going to use the magic of television, Bob, and here you go.
Magic is right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, members of the Select Board. I, uh, can only echo what Sharon has said, and that it doesn't happen by, by one person. It's a combination of many people coming together, uh, and helping to promote something. So, thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Mr. Stanton, would you like to say something for Mr. White? I know you've worked for many years with him. And I invited you to, I'm sort of catching you off-guard probably, sorry.
Sorry, it took me a second to take the mute off, but, um, now I've had the honor of working with, uh, Bob since 2014, and, um, I can't think of a person that's more deserving, and I'm so thankful that the town has taken this opportunity to recognize Bob's efforts. Um, he's a great man of integrity in team building, and, uh, he's built so many positive and lasting relationships with so many people within the town. Um, he's truly inspired, and, um, I've learned so much from him over the years, and his ability to build bridges and to build community, uh, is, it's really something that, uh, we all should aspire to, to be like. Uh, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Mr. Slavin?
Uh, good evening, I'm sorry, I had a little difficulty getting in my, uh, where I am right now, the Wi-Fi password has been changed, nobody can figure it out, so I'll be on my phone. Bob, it's, uh, about time, basically, and, uh, we go way back. Uh, Bob was on the, I think, real early on the Finance Committee, we met before that, he and I, and Frank Heath did a lot of things together. Bob and I have done a lot of projects and a lot of different things for a long time, and, uh, this award is, uh, long past due. And also for Sharon Frank, I've done a lot of work back and forth, and I can only say for both of them, thank you very much. It was an honor to be a friend.
Oh, thank you.
Bob, can you hold your, um, certificate up so we can s- excellent.
Oh, that's beautiful.
So what, what I read is inscribed on that certificate, and we hope that you enjoy it for many years.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, Noah, you can, okay, excellent. We go to announcements now, please, um. Ms. Wertz, I'll go with you first. Thank you for joining us, Mr. White and Ms. Frank, we very much appreciate what you've done for us.
I don't have anything to announce today.
Thank you. Mr. Bessie, any announcements?
Um, just one, uh, I don't think it's a, a surprise to anyone, people don't know, but, uh, Labor Day is coming up. Um, this weekend is, uh, is the weekend to be busy, and, um, you know, Monday is, uh, is Labor Day, so, uh, just everyone be out there, be safe, uh, enjoy the, um, enjoy the, uh, end of the summer as the kids, uh, go back to school starting tomorrow, uh, for a couple of days, and then we get to have them for the weekend, extended weekend, and then back to school. Uh, but just enjoy it, um, it's always a great time, uh, hopefully the weather will, uh, be nice for us, but, uh, just be safe, have fun, uh, and enjoy the, uh, the last kick of summer.
Thank you. Mr. Slavin?
Um, this is actually a fairly quiet week, uh, we'll probably be discussing later on, on the board remarks that the town of Wareham, the Selectment, uh, and many, many people have got together, and we're going to, uh, re-establish the Veterans Day Parade on 11/11/2023. Uh, it's a short timeframe, but we're going to make this work. Uh, it's something actually, uh, I was doing an honor of Bob White as well, and, uh, just hope everybody steps up and enjoys this. Uh, everything else I have can wait till later.
Thanks. Mr. Chadwick, announcements?
Uh, I only have one right now. Um, Wareham Boys Basketball will be holding a fundraiser on September 24th, uh, at 1:00 PM at Stone Path Mall. Uh, it will be a cornhole tournament at 11 Kendrick Road in Wareham.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, I have no announcements, so we'll go on to appointments. The first one is the Recycling Committee, Andrew Gallagher, has been recommended by the committee, he's been to several meetings, and he's not only been to meetings, but he's also been there every day that the place is open, and so he's eagerly awaited as a member. May I have a motion, please?
I move to appoint Andrew Gallagher to the Recycling Committee with a term to expire June 30th, 2026.
Seconded. Motion made and seconded. Um, is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is unanimous. Um, the Bylaw Review Committee consists of three people. One of the current people is Sherry Cork. We originally appointed this committee to be over by the end of this town meeting, and there is no way that that is going to happen. There have been several other individuals working with the committee members. Um, a, a Mr. Hurd was unable to continue with the committee, uh, commitment and resigned. So we have an, uh, we have an extension for Sherry Cork, which would be to have her term go to June 30th, 2024, which gets us through the April Town Meeting, and a new appointment for Nora Bicki, who has been working with the committee, even though she hasn't been on the committee. So, um, may I have a motion one at a time, please?
Yes. I move to appoint Nora Bicki to the Bylaw Review Committee with a term to expire March 31st, 2025.
Is there a second, motion made and seconded? To appoint, is there any further discussion on the motion to appoint? Hearing none, I'll go for a roll call vote. Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
And Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, five zeros there, it is so. Next, Mr. Chadwick?
I move to appoint Sherry Quirk to the Bylaw Review Committee with a term to expire June 30th, 2024.
And that's an extension of the original expiry date?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to, um, extend her expiry date to June 30th, 2024. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. We have two appointments for the Board of Health, both of them are re-appointments for associate members. Their terms expire annually, as all associate members do. And so what I'm asking you tonight to do is to reappoint both Julian Morton and Jean Connaughton to terms to expire June 30th, 2024. Um, I've spoken to Ms. Connaughton earlier today, and I know that, um, the Board of Health, because I also talked with Ms., um, Dr. Beagant today, so that both of these would be extended for a year, they will be looking for a full-time member, uh, next month, um, because there was a resignation of a full-time member, so may I have a motion, please?
Are you okay with me doing both at the same time?
Yes, I am.
All right, I move to appoint Julian Morton and Jean Connaughton as associate members, reappoints to the Board of Health Committee with terms to expire June 30th, 2024.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to appoint both of those individuals to an additional one-year appointment. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Um, I'm going to ask that Mr. Manese, please raise your hand. Mr. Manese is applying for two, uh, appointments. One is to the Affordable Housing Trust, and one is to the Council on Aging. I'm going to ask Mr. Manese, um, at, to be let into the meeting. Noah, and then we will hear his, um, application, and you'll be able to answer questions or ask him questions on both of those, and then we'll put those back on the agenda to go back into the appropriate order. Mr. Manese, oh. You're very dark, sir, there, there you go. Good evening, could you identify yourself for the record, please?
Jim Manese. Jim Manese, Cranberry Highway.
Okay, excellent. You are on our agenda for two, um, appointments, one for the Affordable Housing Trust, could you speak to that application first?
Yeah, I've still, you know, I was on the Affordable Housing Trust, uh, as a select person. I was chair for a couple of years. There's a couple of, um, openings I was asked if I'd consider, um, and at that time, there was a conflict in scheduling of something that I was doing, and the Affordable Housing Trust, but this, the conflict resolved itself, thankfully, and so I'd be glad to serve on it if you'd have me.
Any questions for Mr. Manese on the appointment to the Affordable Housing Trust? Nope, okay, now can you speak to your application for the Council on Aging, Mr. Manese, please?
Well, I've been going there, oh, for over a year, and I continue to go, um, Tuesdays, um, I play pool with my buddy John, and sometimes on Wednesdays and Thursdays, sometimes pickleball, do the coffee hours, I attend their meetings regularly. So, um, I'm involved, and, uh, last Friday, um, I helped give out the food resources for the Greater Boston, um, Food Network, and, uh, of course, it was raining like heck. Um, luckily, one of the other volunteers had brought a, like, 12-by-16 tarp, and we were able to cover the two pallets of food. They come in boxes, so we handed those out, and, um, it's enjoyable, you know, it's, I guess, I'm with my peers.
I- i- is that the, um, Meals on Wheels that you do, sir?
No, no, that's the, um, once a month, uh,
The veterans?
For the Greater Boston Food, I forget the other, um, name. But, um, so people, you know, people qualified come through, and you give them whatever's provided, and, you know, there's fruit, there's vegetables, there's canned goods, cereals, and the, most of it's prepackaged, except for the, and even the o- onions, potatoes, and the, the vegetables are prepackaged. Um, so it's, you know, interesting, and one of the people are going to Florida that are doing it, and, um, now, I guess because, um, I'm probably able to lift some of the boxes more readily than others, that they said maybe we can get Jim to do it. So I thanked them, and, you know, it was pretty good.
Okay, thank you. Um, and do any of you have any questions of Mr. Manese on, for his application for the Council on Aging? No? Thanks very much. Mr. Manese, we will take the vote, um, at the end of this portion of the agenda, so Noah, I'll ask you to remove him. Back into the attendees, thank you. Okay, we have a Board of Registars appointment that we must replace one Republican to a term to expire March 31st, 2024. You were given the list of people, and so we need to pick one of those names. Do I have a motion from any one of you?
I make a motion, we appoint Rick Coletti to, um, the Republican Registrar, um, position for the term 4-1. What's it go to now, goes from?
To, with, which will expire March 31st, 2024?
Yeah, because I'm looking, it goes from April 1st, 2022, and it's like, that date's really passed, so.
Right, well, he's filling an unexpired term of somebody who had to resign.
Yeah, Marsha Rossman.
Yeah, so. Is there a second to that, uh, to the, um, motion to appoint Mr. Coletti?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Um, Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin? I can't hear you, sir.
I'm going to abstain simply because I don't have the paperwork available to me tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Chadwick?
Uh, I'm going to say yes.
Okay, and I'm going to say yes, so it is 4-0-1 with Mr. Slavin abstaining. We need to, or I'd like to ask that you appoint Wendy Brizjali as a non-voting ex-officio member on the Cultural Council. She's been on the council for six years, and there were three members who've been serving for six years, and they all expired. Wendy has very nicely offered to continue to serve as a non-voting member so that the trans- transition to the new people will be smooth, and I think that's a great idea. So I would ask for a motion, please?
So.
Well, okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second. Third, fourth, fifth.
Okay, is there any further discussion on the motion to appoint her as an ex-officio non-voting member? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, thank you very much. Um, okay, that was Tricia. Community events, we've kicked this around for a while, um, Mr. Slavin has been on the committee for many years. It is a committee that, um, that 501(c)(3)'s can appoint, can apply to, to uh, advertise and establish a new community event. Um, Mr. Slavin, do you want to just briefly, and I mean really briefly, tell us what it is that the community events does?
We take in applications for nonprofits for events, uh, there are certain expenses that we can reimburse for. Uh, we get approximately $45,000 from the hotel and motel tax and the parking funds, which are basically tax funds, which through a special act come back to this particular committee every year, gets reimbursed back to $45,000. Uh, as bills are submitted to us, they are either approved or denied by the accounting department, and then they're paid.
Thank you. And last year, there was about $30,000 distributed, is that correct?
No, I believe there was more than that, actually, this year, because we have some excess funds, we're looking at probably closer to $65,000.
Okay, excellent. Um, onset bay association, uh, things like the, um, well, previously, the fireworks, the Chalk Festival, that kind of thing, so those are the kinds of events that we're talking about, right?
Yes.
Okay.
You, you wanted me to keep it short, so I did.
Yeah, you did, okay. Um, I had asked Mr. Slavin to step aside so that one of us could move into that position, because it would be something that you would be able to bridge the gap to, you know, to move into where he's been sitting for several years, is, do any of you want to be on that? Mr. Chadwick?
If, I don't want to step on anyone's feet, but yeah, I'll, I'll take it if nobody else.
Okay. They meet regularly, once a month, is that right, Mr. Slavin?
Uh, the third Monday of the month.
Thank you.
And you can probably, they made brownies for me, even though I wasn't there last, yesterday, so you can, you can have some leftover brownies.
Ah, okay, they're probably all gone. Um, Mr. Chadwick has volunteered, is there anyone who'd like to argue with him over that?
No, because he's got big feet, and it'll hurt if he steps on mine.
Okay. May I have a recommendation, please, a motion?
I make a motion. Yeah, uh, I make a motion to, uh, have, uh, Jared Chadwick, um, to the Community Events Committee.
To a term to expire June 30th, 2025?
Uh, yes.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second, and he weighs more than all of us.
Yeah. Um, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Why not?
Mr. Chadwick?
Uh, if I'm not mistaken, do I, I think I have to abstain.
No, you don't have to abstain.
All right, well, then, yes.
And myself, yes, it is done. Um, and then we have two appointments, one would be the Affordable Housing Trust. Um, may I have a motion on that one, please, Mr. Chadwick? This would be Mr. Manese, the applicant.
I move to appoint Jim Munee, excuse me, James Munee's, uh, to the Affordable Housing Trust with a term to expire June 30th, 2024.
They're second to that motion.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, is there any further discussion on the motion? This is the first application, which is the Affordable Housing Trust. Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
No.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Um, I'm going to say yes.
Okay. Mr. Slavin, I'm sorry, do it again, please, uh, because I'm keeping track. Slavin, you said?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Bessie?
No.
Okay, Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Okay, and Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, I will abstain, so it is 3-1-1. And may I have a motion on the Council on Aging, please?
I move to appoint James Munee's to the Council on Aging with a term to expire June 30th, 2024.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to appoint him to the Council on Aging for a term to expire June 30th, 2024. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
I'm going to abstain on this one.
Mr. Bessie?
No.
Mr. Chadwick?
No.
And myself, I will abstain, he is not appointed, thank you very much. Um, I'm going to go quickly to let's see. We have a, um, if you go to 9K, we have a request that we would okay for ARPA funds for a, uh, donation to Damian's Pantry. We have, um, Rhonda Vegan here, who could answer questions. Um, so Rhonda, would you raise your hand, please? I thought I saw you.
Yeah, her hand is up.
Oh, okay. Noah, would you let Ms. Vegan in? Um, you have a whole bunch of information that I gave you. Uh, the ARPA funds are the American Rescue Plan Act. The money is to be used for several different, um, uh, types of requests. You have been given all of the documents, and this application has been properly filled out. Damian's Pantry, as you know, is a, um, area-wide, uh, support system specifically for food, but it also serves other, um, other things that are needed in our community and in our region. Do you, any of you have any questions? What we would be doing would simply be voting to authorize the use of the funds. Do any of you have any questions of Ms. Vegan? Yes? Do any of you have any questions, Ms. Fagan? Yes, now, Mr. Slaven?
It's really more just the the process. My understanding was that. Uh, the ARPA funds, the request usually uh. Goes from the town administrator to uh Plymouth County, the treasurer for approval. Uh, I'm not sure the board of selectmen can say they're they're approve it, but I believe the town administrator has to process all this.
Um, he has already processed it, and according to him, we need to approve the application for the Plymouth County ARPA funds. That's directly from him.
Do we have a letter to that effect?
Uh, it's part of the packet, yeah.
Okay, because I have no package.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bessie?
Um, so uh, I maybe I missed it in the in the packet, um, but uh, is there a uh, is there a dollar amount on?
Yes, I'm sorry, it's fifty thousand dollars, and they have raised a million, million. Million five.
Point six.
Oh, one point six in donations. And um, they're asking us for fifty, they have a goal of two million, two hundred thousand dollars. Ms. Reagan, can you identify yourself for the record, please?
Hi, everyone, I'm Rhonda Beugan.
Okay.
So, uh, so just one more, one more question um, on it. So what um? What would this uh, what would this fifty thousand dollars um, potentially be going toward to uh, to help the efforts of Damian?
The total cost of the project is two million, two hundred thousand eleven, two hundred. Two, two million, two hundred eleven thousand, two hundred eighty-six dollars. They've raised a million six in donations. So the land was donated, the construction of the building, and you've all seen the building is a million six and change. Um, the design was eighty-one, other development like site costs and the interest on. Uh, loans that they may have had to uh, take out. So really, what it is, is to fund the construction. Of everything except the land, which was a donation.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions, Ms. Fagan? No, then I will accept a motion.
I move to vote on supporting Damian's food pantry with the ARPA funds.
Second.
Let me just read the way you need to do it one more time. Sorry. Um. So, uh, uh, hmm, move to approve the application for the Plymouth County ARPA funds, is that your?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, movement seconded. Um, any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for. Was that a raise your hand, Alan? Because I can't hear you. You're muted.
Sorry, uh, it's a little difficult with this little phone I got. Um, just a comment. Uh, I know that I went to uh, the meeting with supposedly Congressman Keating, it was raining. Uh, obviously the only one that went there, uh, and unfortunately, nobody notified us that the meeting had been moved over to the. Damian's pantry on the Viking Drive. Just so you know, it was a little embarrassing, because we had made arrangements to be there to talk to Representative Congressman Keating as well.
Oh, sorry about that, Alan.
I know, it's just.
That's okay, guys, knock it off.
But that's all.
Excuse me, there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, it is so. Thank you very much, Ms. Viggen. Um, the paperwork will be. Completed in the next couple of days. I'm not sure what the timeframe is after that, but you can count on the funds. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just want to say to everyone, thank you so much for your contribution to the campaign, and. If anyone else would like to donate, we do have a website, and we have five hundred thousand dollars left to raise. And hope to be in there before the end of the year. So thank you again for all your support for this project.
Can you give us your website, please?
Damian's Family Food or Damian's Food Pantry dot O R G. So Damian's Food Pantry dot O R G.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The um, people who are going to be presenting the Alternative Energy Committee, I believe it's Ms. Quirk. And anyone else with you, because you raised your hand, please. Ms. Quirk? And is there anyone? Noah, would you let? Ms. Quirk in, please? We've kicked around the Alternative Energy Committee a couple of times. Ms. Quirk um. Is back with us. She's just back from a vacation. And so I have asked her to come back and refresh our memories. Um, as to what it is that. Um, the. Alternative Energy Committee would hope to achieve. Because we've had the presentations a couple of times so far. Um, she did forward us. The PowerPoint presentation. And so, Ms. Quirk, um, if you would identify yourself for the record, and it, you have no one else with you, right? Okay, um, and just quickly let us know, first of all, I'd love to know where the. Um, solar bylaw is in its stumbling toward the finish line. And then um, if you could let us know what it is that you're looking to do, and again, I would. S- suggest, we we've seen it before, so maybe if you could do a quick presentation, then then we can do a question and answer with you, if that's okay.
That sounds good.
Excellent, thank you.
So my name is Sherry Quirk. And I'm here to talk about the Alternative Energy Committee. I'm going to apologize in advance. I came back from vacation. With a cold and a cough, and I've taken every legally available form of medicine to try to. Deal with both, but apologies in advance if the um, if the medicine fails. But just to first answer uh, your questions here, Whiteside. Uh, the solar bylaw is still before uh, the Attorney General's Municipal Law Review Section. We have been told that we should expect feedback on it on September nineteenth. And so we are eagerly awaiting that, and also looking at what uh, what changes might be possible or necessary. Either in light of whatever review the Attorney General does, or because uh. Uh, developing a bylaw like this is a continuing process, and. Uh, there are some uh, some issues that come up, have come up in the course of our review of solar applications that uh, we'd like to be able to take a look at.
Excellent.
So um, with that, I'll just, you know, track you back to the presentation that the chair referenced. And I'm not going to go through the whole thing. Uh, but wanted to take you to uh, page three of it, just to talk about the issues that we talked about last time. And uh, there are four of them. And you'll recall that the the outcome of this issue has been. Uh, that the planning board has taken on through a working group, uh, some of the issues that we've identified. And uh, what I'll report to you is that. Uh, on the subject of um. Battery storage. Uh, I I'm sorry, on the subject of um, decommissioning of solar projects and batteries. In during the course of our pending cases, I think we've made some progress. And putting together realistic figures for decommissioning. And are working on the creditworthiness issues that uh, that are very important with decommissioning. Uh, as we've said before, the projects basically and generally are uh, set up as. Limited liability corporations, which means they have no assets, and so it's important for us to be able to. Have access to assets in the event that. Uh, there is abandonment or something goes wrong with one of these sites. So I I would say we've made progress there. That is an area that we're continuing to work on at the planning board. On the subject of battery storage, we've had a lot of planning board activity in pending cases. And we have worked on a battery storage bylaw, looking at some of the. Uh, bylaws that that I would have considered to be state of the art. Uh, from New York, from some other towns in Massachusetts who have. Hired many advisors and looked carefully at this issue. Uh, our our um, proposed bylaw would have followed closely what that those towns did and what New York has suggested. But I'm chagrined to tell you that, uh, at least in New York. Uh, the governor has called for a special investigation. Of uh, lithium ion batteries, um, because of. In pretty rapid succession, three uh, fires in uh, in batteries, including at a solar farm. Very similar to the kinds of solar farms. We are looking at for Wareham. And I think that the project where there was a fire. Is one that would have been subject to the state of the art review that we were looking at, and so. Uh, to to say that it has uh, shaken our confidence. Um, is uh, just to say, honestly, we're still looking at this. And want to make sure that no matter what happens. Uh, what we go forward with for Wareham is protective of our citizens. Fulfills our responsibilities under the law. And protects our environment. And I don't know at this point what the planning board may ask and uh, and seek to move on to town meeting. I would say whatever it is, it's likely that it's not going to be the final word, because this issue is an ever-developing. And elusive one, so that I think would be an issue for an alternative energy committee to look at. Now. The, there have been, and as we said in the third bullet here, several large battery storage projects in the state. Um, Medford and Carver both have been approved. But with concerns noted and conditions attached. Or one of the issues that is of concern to us, which is the firewater runoff. From battery storage fires, and uh, as um. As the the press has indicated, uh, battery storage fires uh, can use an enormous amount of water. I read in the press with the recent. Uh, um, e-car battery fire that the fire department used about eleven thousand gallons of. Of water, it's an enormous amount of water. And raises concerns depending on where the battery is located. About the firewater runoff going into sensitive wetland or aquifer areas. So that's um, that's an area that we will be looking at. As far as I know, there are no. Large battery storage projects being proposed. But um. I think we need to stay focused on this and prepare ourselves for it. Uh, the last issue on this page three. Is one that that I think is of.
One second, Ms. Quirk. Mr. Slaven, please raise your hand. Noah, could you let Mr. Slaven back into the meeting? I'm sorry, Ms. Quirk, go ahead.
Okay.
Mr. Slaven, raise your hand? Oh, you probably can't on your phone. Um. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Go ahead. I'm sorry, Ms. Quirk, go ahead.
So the last issue on this page. Is um, a reference to the large incentives. Being made available for solar and battery storage uh, under the federal um, Inflation Reduction Act. Now, um, money is flowing out of the federal government at this point at an enormous rate. And much of it is earmarked or intended for. Uh, low-income communities, moderate-income communities, environmental justice communities. Uh, so. This is an area that would bear scrutiny by us to see whether there are opportunities there. Uh, for us to look at. Massachusetts D O E R. Has actually put out a straw person proposal. Seeking four hundred million dollars for um. Grants to expand access to solar for tended to assist the communities um, and workforce. To provide benefits to workforce. Uh, because of the. Significant commitment that Massachusetts has made to installing solar generation. And to attaining zero emissions, and it's want to install ten megawatts by, I'm sorry, gigawatts by. Twenty thirty, enormous amount of added energy, an enormous amount of land being used. There is, you know, and you, uh, i- if you think about it, it's about five acres per megawatt. That's an enormous amount of land. There is a big um, debate taking place now in Massachusetts and nationwide, really. About where the optimal sighting is for uh, for um, solar facilities. Uh, the state has, D O E R has recently re- released a study. Saying that uh, in order to achieve its goal, the state has plenty of land available. For installing solar. And if you look at the study, there's a map within it, and if you look at Wareham. What you'll note is that there are vast uh, areas of the town that appear to be eligible for solar based on this study. So uh, just an information point. Now, what that says to me. Is that. Wareham needs to take steps to make sure that. The solar is uh, is installed, not just where it can be installed. But where the town believes it should be installed. And what is in the best interest of the town? Its people, the environment, and uh, addressing climate change. Uh, there is a big debate over this. Um. Between solar developers, environmental groups. About whether there should be continued reliance on forested areas for solar development, or whether. Whether the uh, solar should be really cited in already disturbed lands. Uh, you know, ground fields, other areas where uh, the ground has already been disturbed. Or um, rooftops or parking lots. So, big debate going on. Uh, legislation proposed. And um. And there is about to come out a study by the Mass Audubon. That looks at the question of where. Solar should.
Recording stopped.
Be installed. Uh, in order to uh, in order to uh, avoid forested areas.
Can you hang on one second, Ms. Quirk? Noah, why did the recording stop?
I think W C T V.
Recording in progress. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I just want to make.
I apologize, we just. Lost connection for some reason.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry, Ms. Quirk, I just wanted to make sure that we're recording. Go ahead.
So. You know, so again, the question is, with sort of warring philosophies. And opportunity and also potential harm. Uh, where is it that Wareham wants to be situated? And how can we best address this? Uh, and. You know, I would uh, recommend that the question of an alternative energy committee be revisited. And um, last time. Uh, with, if you turn to page. Eight of the um, proposal, we talked about forming a committee. With representatives of various committees um, in or boards, commissions in town. Uh, and with constituent representation as well. And uh. What we would suggest is that the select would consider. Uh, establishing committee, a committee maybe five to seven members. On the committee with other inputs as well. Uh, from interested parties, advisors. And uh, we have received expressions of interest from a number of people. I think it would be a good idea to look at these expressions of interest. Look at who ideally might be on this committee. And um, and uh, have some outreach to uh, to see if we can form a robust and effective committee. If you'd like me to do this, I'd be happy to uh, embark on this and bring back some suggestions to you. And uh, I deeply apologize for my voice.
Okay. So um. I'm, you have, let me just sort of cut to the chase. You're recommending between five and seven members. We've heard your presentation a couple of times, and and I think we all agree that this is probably something that we need to do. Um, do any of you have any questions of Ms. Quirk, Mr. Chadwick? Go ahead.
Um, I I was just going over your paperwork here. Um, I'm a hundred percent for this. My one thing that I really want you to do is to. Uh, reach out to both fire departments, and. I don't know if we're allowed to this, but I would highly recommend. That you make it mandatory that at least one. that you make it mandatory that at least one firefighter be on this committee. I know for a fact, being a firefighter myself, solar panels are great, but I absolutely hate them on houses because we can't get through. We have to. There there's so much extra work to vent a house with solar panels. It's extremely dangerous. It's extremely dangerous anyways getting on a roof, but with solar panels, it's a heck of a lot more dangerous.
Great.
I I think that's a fantastic suggestion.
Mr. Slavin? You're muted. You are muted. Isn't it nice when Mr. Slavin is muted? Sorry.
Gee, I'm feeling I'm being abused again.
You are.
Ms. Quirk and I have had a lot of discussions over the last three or four months on this issue. Initially, I was a little concerned that it'd be too much regulation. But in the meantime, for those of you basically put solar panels on your house and had the wonderful experience of actually adding the backup battery systems inside your house like your garage. Hate to let you know that most likely your insurance company will no longer cover the fire insurance in the house because of the issue with the batteries inside and the almost impossibility of putting the battery fires out flying apartments. Jared can confirm at this point, the basic policy is when the lithium batteries go up in flame, they let things burn to the ground before they do anything else because they can't do much with it. So these, a lot of things have changed. The storage of the batteries and then what do we do to dispose of it? We're running into the planning board and other areas where we have no idea what the real true cost is going to be. The way these things are sold is really a twenty year basis. The average person probably won't be in their home in twenty years or unfortunately may not be alive in twenty years. So this is an industry which is, you know, really exploding everywhere with very little control and very little understanding of the true costs at all. So this is, you know, what I thought would be kind of not necessary initially is now extremely important because we have boards that are trying to make decisions and they have no basis what to do. Thank you.
Excellent. Ms. Quirk.
So Sheri.
Go ahead.
Sheri, it's good to see you. I saw you on Zoom last night and I thought you looked like you had partied really hard. I thought, wow, they partied all the way home. So I'm sorry you feel so bad.
I'm not a partier. I'm sorry to say.
You know, even as things go along, you know, just because of my background in the industry that this actually generated this technology, I just tend to stay on top of it. I did look at a couple of the New York reports and the first one I read that they told they it was giving off poisonous fumes. So everyone just stay in your house. Now, two years ago, when that started in Illinois, they evacuated six hundred homes for a long time. So I do think we need experts and people with experience on this committee. I'm thrilled to see us get back here. I would also say we need to look to also see who we can find that has some expertise in poisonous gases, what happens to them, where do you go with them, how do you handle them? Because these sites are definitely letting that off based on the New York report. I think there was a similar report in Maine recently. And so things move forward.
Thank you. Mr. Bessie?
Thank you. Hey, Sheri, how are you? So sorry about that. Siri was yelling at me. So having spent some time on the solar bylaw study committee, I I kinda I kinda know a little bit about kind of what it takes to just think about the different things that are going on with solar energy, other alternative energies. I think it's really important to have a committee that is solely focused on this. And finding the right people, I think, is going to be key. You know, having a committee and just filling the numbers isn't gonna do us any good. So it's finding the right people that are willing to take the time. And to Jared's point, yes, I think a firefighter on the committee is very important to be able to understand, you know, what it takes when something does happen. I mean, we've we've seen reports, we've seen actual fires in some of these solar arrays and the inability to be able to contain them in a way without, you know, destroying, you know, acres of land or just, you know, God forbid it be in a residential community. You know, the devastation could be huge. So I just want to thank you for taking the time to, you know, study this further and and keep committed to pushing forward and I'm really looking forward to seeing what this committee might shape to and who will be on it and, you know, the good that will come from it. To Alan's point, to really help some of the other boards in this town to be able to make informed decisions about what's good, what's not good, where it can go, where it can't go, all of those things. So I'm looking forward to seeing more from you as far as, you know, people that might be interested and, you know, really starting to talk and take shape. So thank you for the time that you've put into it and the time that you'll continue to put into it to really make sure that this is something that is worth the time and is going to be effective.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chadwick?
Just real quick, in regards to Tricia's remarks and advice for Ms. Quirk, Deputy Haskell of Wareham Fire is on the state hazmat team. So he actually would be able to answer a lot of the questions you have about the hazards of that stuff.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to ask for a motion to establish the alternative energy committee, and I'm going to go with the seven member board because in my conversations with Ms. Quirk, I've learned that there are a whole lot of people who really would like to jump in here. I personally don't think committees should be more than seven because it just gets to be unwieldy. And you can always talk with other people. I know that you actually serve on a committee right now where you have a lot of help in terms of accomplishing what you need to accomplish. So may I have a motion to establish a committee of seven members and to be called the Alternative Energy Committee?
I move. Okay.
I second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve or to establish the committee with seven members. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Quirk?
Yes.
Yourself? Yes. So, Ms. Quirk, I'm going to throw it back in your lap to we'll we'll post the committee on the website, but could you please tomorrow or tonight send me what the, you know, what's the purpose of the committee? In other words, that would go on to the website under the, you know, so that we can have applicants fill it in.
Okay.
And when the committee has been established, we will talk about liaisons. Thank you very much, Ms. Quirk. Very much appreciate all of you who have done for the town.
Thank you.
Good night?
Good night.
Okay, now I'm going to go to nine G. Noel Humphries. I have four other names. Rob Corley, Tim Dougherty, Joe Haskett, and Greg Littell. If you are here on behalf of Neighbor Works Cranberry Manor Two, please raise your hand. Mr. Sullivan, would you let them in, please? Mr. Dougherty, Mr. Haskett, Mr. Corley, and Greg Littell. Once you're all in the meeting, I'm going to ask you to identify yourselves. I understand Ms. Humphries may not be with us this evening. Is that because she she doesn't have a voice? I guess she's sick. So you did forward us a packet of information which I forwarded to the Board of Selectmen earlier this evening. But I understand you have a PowerPoint presentation. And which one of you is going to be leading the discussion, please?
Good evening. My name's Rob Corley. I'll be leading the discussion to start and I'll be handing it off to some of the members of the team.
Okay, so let's, before you all speak, could you identify yourself for the record, Mr. Corley?
Yeah, good evening, members of the board. My name is Rob Corley. I'm the CEO of Neighbor Works Housing Solutions.
Mr. Dougherty, please.
Hi, I'm Tim Dougherty. I'm the Real Estate Development Director of Neighbor Works Housing Solutions.
Thank you.
I just want to mention Noel Humphries is here and she might be raising her hand to try to get into the meeting.
I don't see her on the list of attendees yet, but okay, if she does, just have her raise her hand. Mr. Haskett, please.
Hi, good evening. Joe Haskett, Principal at Union Studio Architects.
Thank you. And Mr. Littell?
Hi, Greg Littell. I'm a community designer with Union Studio.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Corley, the floor is yours. And are you going to be sharing the PowerPoint, sir?
Yes.
Okay, excellent.
All right, so make sure everyone can see that.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Again, good evening, everyone, and thank you for your time tonight. We wanted to present to you a development project that we've been looking at, just informational at this point. We wanted to get some feedback and and maybe better introduce ourselves to to the board. Again, my name is Rob Corley. I'm the CEO of Neighbor Works Housing Solutions and we're a five oh one C three nonprofit community development corporation located in in the region. And I'm going to take you through a quick little slideshow here. If I could get it to work, sorry. It's just not clicking for me here. Oh, there we go. You you still can see that, yes?
Yes, we can, Rob.
Thank you. Very good. So again, we're located in the South Shore, South Coast. We are in Bristol, Plymouth, and Norfolk Counties. We've been a nonprofit housing development corporation for over forty years. We have offices in Quincy, Brockton, Kingston, New Bedford, Tonton, and Fall River, and we cover quite a large area with a variety of different services. And I'm going to briefly go over a few of those. You see here on the map, basically the entire area here, which includes Buzzards Bay, Wareham, and so on. We're part of Neighbor Works America as an organization. We're not a franchise. We're an independent nonprofit with a board of directors that are residents, local residents, business businesses, and some public officials. But we are part of Neighbor Works America where we leverage federal dollars that Neighbor Works America gets awarded every year. We compete with other neighbor groups across the country to access that grant funding. And as a exemplary organization in the Neighbor Works American network, we access that funding and leverage it in to support things like homebuyer education, landlord training, down payment assistance, and other programs that we offer. We typically leverage that funding. We use it to acquire properties sometimes for some of our developments. And that's usually first money in, which allows us to leverage other money from other state and local programs. We create a lot of jobs and work with over eleven thousand households annually in one fashion or another in the region. Some of the lines of business that we that I'm going to highlight here for you is real estate development. That's what we'll focus on tonight as we present to you all. But we also provide property management and residence services for a lot of the properties that we own. We do that in-house and also in partnership with other property management organizations. We operate a family domestic violence shelter and the home base program for the state of Massachusetts. We also provide shelter to families seeking emergency shelter throughout the state. We provide construction management and owner's rep services to other nonprofit partners who are also seeking to develop new housing or facilities for their special needs populations, in particular supportive housing for veterans and so on. I'll highlight a couple of those things in just a minute. We are basically the state's housing authority in the region. We have a leased housing department with over three thousand section eight vouchers that we administer for the state in partnership with private landlords in the region. We provide housing resources to homeowners and tenants in the region, which include Raft, which is funding to help folks who are facing eviction and or half, which is
Okay.
state funding to help folks that are facing foreclosure. And last two items here are we are a lender, a C D F I lender, so we do down payment assistance and some small business lending. We also lend to existing homeowners for handicap accessibility or home modification work or A D Us as well as lead paint abatement and other things, second mortgage lending products we offer to homeowners. And we have a large team of HUD certified housing counselors that provide homebuyer education, financial coaching, foreclosure prevention, and reverse mortgage counseling, landlord training, and credit repair and so on. Some of the real estate development projects that we have done in the region, I'm showing on the screen now. You know, at Neighbor Works, we have approximately a thousand units and over three hundred additional units in our pipeline. These are primarily serving low and moderate income families, affordable housing, which includes low income housing tax credit type projects, workforce housing, market rate housing. The center bubble here is a project called the Watson, which was market workforce and Lytech, our low income housing tax credits. To your right is a supportive housing project we did for homeless veterans in Marshfield. To your left is a supportive housing development we did in Quincy with for adults with developmental disabilities. So we do not only large real estate development projects, but also smaller ones that you see highlighted here. We also do some mixed use development. This is a development we finished just two years ago in downtown Brockton on Main Street called the Sycamore on Main. As you can see, it's mixed use with a commercial element on the first floor here in Brockton Beer Company and forty-eight units of mixed income housing above in downtown Brockton. Another project we just recently completed in Quincy, supportive housing for for homeless individuals, eighteen studio apartments, all new construction. This is in Quincy Point, right near the old shipyard. We are about to complete in September a large mixed use seventy-two unit senior housing development in Holbrook Center. Again, commercial on the first floor and senior housing above. That will be complete in September, beautiful building there. And also working on a project in Attleboro, which would be a combination of a shelter, triage shelter on the first floor for homeless and then permanent supportive housing above those units, twenty-two units above, and that is in Attleboro. Another senior project, a historic renovation of an existing or an old school in Brockton called the Lincoln School, and this will be a new home to thirty-seven seniors, thirty-seven units for seniors with services. That's under construction now. And lastly, as a highlight here of some projects, this is another one near the Campello Train Station in Brockton. We call it Brockton Cell T O D. And again, a mixed use development with ninety-four low income housing tax credit units right across from the Campello Train Station.
Can you hang on one second, Mr. Corley? I'm sorry. Mr. Sullivan, can you let Mr. Chadwick back in? He apparently Oh, you are? Okay, sorry. Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Corley. We are having a few technical difficulties tonight.
No problem, no problem.
Mr. Corley.
You you run a very good meeting, so
Thanks.
No problem at all. So so with that little background on Neighbor Works, I know that's sort of rapid fire. There's a lot more to our organization than that, but I just wanted to give you all some background and context as to the type of organization we are and how we operate. Before I turn this over here to Tim and Noel, I just want to say we pride ourselves on working with communities and in communities to develop housing that's not only needed but is embraced. And so that's in that spirit is why we're coming to the board with some new plans to add to an existing development we have at Cranberry Manor on Cranberry Highway. So with that, I will turn it over to to Tim and Noel. And Tim, I think for the sake of this, I'll just keep flipping the slides.
Yeah, I I think that would be the best. And I'll just sort of indicate. So thanks, Rob, and thanks, everybody. Thanks, members of the board for having us tonight. Noel, you're in now, right? Yep. Okay. So, yeah, we wanted to tell you a little bit about a project that we began planning probably about five or six months ago. But these things take a long time. We're early in the planning process. We've spoken with the planning director in Wareham as of a few months ago, and he suggested that we come to you guys and tell you a little bit about what we're thinking. We have a property currently that we own called Cranberry Manor in Wareham. If you go to the next slide, Rob. It's up in the northwest corner of town, near four ninety-five. If you go to the next slide. On Cranberry Highway, this is sort of, this is a picture of the front entrance on the left. It's twenty-four units of affordable family housing. All the units are two-bedroom. We have a great group of residents down there. It's a large site with a lot of land. And a sort of a large garage building that we have in the back. When you enter the site, our residences are on the left and sort of you drive through a parking area with parking spaces on the right and the left. And then in the back of the site, we have a very large sort of garage building that is not utilized. And one of the things that we know is needed everywhere in the region and the country is more housing for seniors. And so we began thinking, well, the back of this site would work really well. And so what we're here to tell you about is our plan for forty new rental units for seniors over the age of sixty-two. All the units would be affordable at different levels, and we can tell you more about that. With us here today are architects from Union. And I think I'd invite Joe and Greg to jump in here. You guys can talk a little bit about the site and how we've kind of approached design. And the next slide, Rob, is the survey.
Excellent. Thank you, Tim. Good evening, Madam Chairperson and members of the board. Thank you for taking the time to let us review this, our proposal with you. As Rob alluded to early in the presentation, we are at a conceptual level. We are very early on. And also, just to reiterate what Tim had said, this is the existing survey that you're looking at, and at the lower portion of the site, you'll see the four units that make up the existing multifamily project with parking on the right. And in the upper portion of the site plan, you see the garage that Tim was alluding to as well. There's a large set of, a large tract of land here. One area is set for the septic system to the left. And Rob, if you wouldn't mind, we could go to the next slide, which starts to talk about our proposals. And for the board, you should know that we have two schemes that we'd like to show you. I think there's some kind of still internal conversation going on that, since we're still very new to this and at the conceptual level, we thought we'd pull back the veil a little bit and, you know, rather than just showing you one, we'd show you the two. So as you see where the existing multifamily is off of Cranberry Highway, the first proposal is an L-shaped building. And the difference between the two schemes that you'll see coming up is bar versus an L. And basically, what we've done is we provided two smaller parking areas. One is between the existing multifamily and the proposed senior living facility. One thing that's nice for seniors is to have a drop-off lane. And we've also provided a small little green space that helps separate the existing multifamily between the two buildings. This also allows for people to have a place to sit out front. We are proposing, as Tim mentioned, forty units. And one of the things that, of course, that we would need to discuss is with your fire department and your fire officials, we are kind of indicating a potential area where we may have some structured turf to allow fire access around our building. And we'll also have to have a civil engineer weigh in on our septic design. So that's the first scheme, site plan. If we go to the next one, you'll see a colored rendering, three-D rendering. Again, these are very quick renderings, nothing final. But just to give the select board some idea of what we're talking about in terms of what the project could look like, excuse me. And Rob, if you go to the next one, we can show the plan for Scheme B. Scheme B, very similar to Option A, but this is a bar building compared to an L-shaped building. And what this affords, the senior facility is a little bit more green space directly adjacent to the building and allows for more exterior seating. And again, we have the same, you know, we'll have to have the same conversation with your fire officials about fire access, but I think that we've tried to accommodate that in the event that, you know, some access is required. And again, we have a drop-off lane. So I think that overall, you know, the project makes sense based upon, you know, where the existing garage is. And it also allows for, you know, a nice conversation between the existing multifamily and the proposed senior building. And lastly, what we are proposing right now, we've looked at the zoning regulations. We are at three stories, forty units, and we're proposing a by-right project. So all the setbacks are maintained. The building height is maintained. But again, we're here to introduce our conceptual project to the board. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Humphries, do you want to address us? I know you're...
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. Thanks.
That's okay.
Yeah.
Identify yourself for the record, please.
Yeah, no problem. So I'm Noel Humphries, and I'm the Associate Real Estate Development Director at Neighbor Works. And had planned to speak but ended up not feeling so great. I think I'm in the same boat with Sherry. But yeah, nothing necessarily to add if I can help answer questions, though if there's any, I can do that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Do any of my board members have questions? Please raise your hand. Jared, if you have your hand. I can't see you.
Can you see my hand?
Oh, yeah, I can see your hand now. Go ahead, Mr. Bessie, sorry.
Yeah. So just a couple of questions. You know, well, first, I know Neighbor Works Housing Solutions very well. I've dealt with them in the past from being a landlord and helping tenants in the crisis of housing and not being able to afford things. You know, very, very great organization, very, very good to work with. One of the questions that I do have is, you know, you're proposing forty units of senior housing for sixty-two and up. Are you dedicating a certain percentage of those units to local Wareham residents? It means they're a lottery system. Like, what are the thoughts behind how you would fill this development with seniors?
Sure, yeah.
Can one of you answer the question?
Yes. So I'll start, and Tim and Noel, you can add. Yes, there will be a lottery process for the residents. As Tim mentioned, you know, the amount of senior housing in the region, state, in the country is, that's affordable, is in high demand, and there is not a lot available. So there would certainly be a lottery. On the local preference side of things, there's an affirmative fair marketing process based, you know, that's required because of the state funding that we would be using, which makes sense. But the affirmative fair marketing is in the general area. So we feel that Wareham seniors that were interested in applying will certainly, you know, have full ability to do so and are primarily the target market for the affirmative fair marketing.
I'm going to ask you to answer that slightly different. We have a new development going in where we have been told it's Penrose and Littleton Drive, where this first-year preference would actually be, I think it's seventy-five percent Wareham residents. I'm not sure that's the exact same. I'm not sure that's the exact number, but is there a way of being a little bit more definitive for Mr. Bessie?
So we do not have a set aside for Wareham residents at this time for the affirmative fair marketing plan. It's not that we can't ask for a percentage with our funders, but I don't have that percentage to share at this point. So it depends sometimes on whether or not the funding source will allow a local preference of that that height or that amount.
Okay, great. Thanks. Mr. Bessie, any other questions?
I mean, I get it. I know that, you know, with it being, you know, with it not being private money and having state funding, you know, they have certain requirements to make access to, you know, people across the state. I just didn't know if, you know, you had had any of those discussions. And I know that this is very preliminary, and you've kind of been working on this for only several months. And projects like this, you know, obviously don't happen overnight. They take time. You know, Littleton Drive is something that has been in the works for a very long time. So I get it. You know, I'm excited that there are organizations out there that are looking to, you know, take care of our seniors and make more, you know, housing affordable to them. As we know, in the world that we currently live in, nothing is really affordable anymore. So, you know, I'm excited to kind of see where this project might go and learn more about it as you guys continue to develop. I thank you for taking the time to present this to us and, you know, considering Wareham for a project like this. And, you know, hopefully, it's something that can, you know, come about if it works for all parties involved.
Excellent.
Yes, and just an additional comment, we will, you know, be requesting a local preference, but I can't guarantee what that may or may not be.
Thank you. Mr. Slaven?
Okay, I'm not muted this time. Questions? I have a couple. Are these units going to be considered affordable? What's the, you know, what's the basic setup on this? Are you going to be using some state funds, et cetera?
Yes, the units will be a hundred percent affordable, so they would be on your account. And that's the target. As Tim mentioned, there may, there's different levels of affordability, but they will be a hundred percent affordable. All the units will be, you know, we would consider affordable or, you know, income restricted.
So will it be the usual twenty-five percent affordable and the rest at market rate?
No, a hundred percent of the units will be affordable. And what I can tell you is the affordability in terms of percentage of area median income, which sometimes can be meaning very little to people. And I can't tell you what the dollar amount is in terms of annual income offhand. But the way we will do it is the, there'll be units that are affordable at sixty percent of area median income. And then we will have a portion of the units set aside for, at a greater affordability rate of thirty percent area median income. And those thirty percent units will also come with an operating subsidy attached to sort of help offset the rent that the folks that are living in those units are paying. Whereas the sixty percent units, the folks living there will pay what is a rent-restricted rent amount.
Yeah, because I'm sure you know, most people don't know, but Wareham, for some reason, under HUD, they had the wonderful thought process of putting us in the Boston market for numbers, which makes things extremely difficult. And most times, a lot of way...
Hang on a second. Somebody has something going on in the background. Can you shut your radio or whatever it is that's interfering, please?
I'll have to move to a different area. Hold on.
Sorry.
No, it's okay.
To his point, though, we are aware of the, you know, that challenge or, you know, with the Boston rents being the determining factor, so.
Yeah, we basically, we contacted HUD. They were told, maybe they'll talk to us in three years, but I don't think anything is ever going to happen. My concern really is that Wareham residents, because of the income levels, et cetera, a lot of them just can't qualify to get into Stoughton. Though even though we say we want, you know, seventy-five percent Wareham people, we found that most of these projects do not have the availability to make that happen for Wareham residents. I will say the Cranberry Manor facility that's there now in West Wareham has been a very low impact as far as police, et cetera, which is really, I'm not going to mention others, but it's been a pleasure as far as what's happened there. So I don't have any issues with the actual company or what they're going to do. It's just the state has made a real hard push for housing, et cetera. But at the same time, the affordability issue really is not affordable for a lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you. Miss Wertz?
Yeah, I have kind of a hodgepodge of quick questions. Probably shows that I'm not a builder. So first of all, I'm familiar with your current three buildings, and I think they have a nice look. I think they are good for the neighborhood. And again, they always look A-plus. The people seem to be nice. I like the concept of adding more, especially for elderly. When I looked at your drawing, one of the things we've questioned in our town is, right now, we don't have design templates that we require people to design towards. So I'm looking at being much more inclined to be supportive to a building that physically looks like it's in New England. I mean, the different things you showed us say you absolutely can design like that versus having us look like we're a leftover manufacturing building that's been renovated in Worcester or wherever. So I pay attention to that because the land you're on has some other good things happening around it and some other pieces of land that do not look great. So we want to make sure that we stay looking like what we are, which is basically a Cape Town before you get to the Cape. I also am interested in your septic plans. That's a lot of apartments to be on septic systems. And you've, I'm assuming you've done that type of work before and not had problems? Yes, no?
Yes, yep. It's where we started, actually. So the civil engineer did a study of the septic situation at the site now and then what it could bear. And so that's actually where the forty units came from. So we sort of like backed, backed, backed into it.
Backed into it?
Yep.
Just curiosity, how far behind that building, far away, is the highway? Is there, you could have lots of woods there or minimal. I just can't see that.
Yeah, there's a lot of woods back there. It's a pretty big piece of land. And the elevation actually rises a bit towards the back there, and it's heavily wooded.
So it helps, it helps...
Yeah, you will not even, yeah, the residents will have, you know, a nice private back and for a good stretch. And you will, truthfully, I don't think you'll be able to see this building too much left, right, or rear.
Yeah. It doesn't touch on the highway on one ninety-four, four ninety-five. It, Doty Street goes behind this development. So Main Street or the Cranberry Highway, then the Cranberry Manors. In back of them is Doty Street and then the highway. So there's not just woods. There's a whole nother road and then more woods.
Yeah, and there's, I think there's a residence maybe on Doty Street that also shares a lot line with us, but there is a, I don't know the actual measurement, but it's quite a bit. And it's all primarily pines, so it's pretty thick.
Yeah. I mean, basically, that's the questions I have right now. I have the same concerns that Mr. Slaven put forward in that we... It's very interesting because Wareham is not a rich town. It has a lot of people in low-income brackets. And we've seen before where our people are not taken care of. And then sites like this get filled with people from all over the state, and our people still are not taken care of. And it would be different if the income levels were different. So I would just say that would be something that, if it can be addressed, would be important from my perspective. And that's it. Thank you for your answers.
Thanks. Mr. Chadwick?
The only thing I have to say is thank you for thinking about the fire department with the fire access around the backside. I know Antonelli Circle down in Dennis has the exact same thing. And we down there are very grateful for it. That's it.
Thanks. I have just a couple of questions or a couple of comments. Your architects union are extremely well-regarded in the industry. So I want to thank you for having... Having them join into your project. Um, are you looking, is this gonna be a lip, a lip? Are you looking for a letter of, you know, yeah, we like your concept? Is that what you're looking for?
I think so.
Okay, alright, um. And the buildings, the four buildings in front, um. Without telling you how old I am, I can tell you that my children actually went to a babysitter in those. Four units. They were in unit number three. So, uh, those buildings are at least forty years old. Um, what kind of repairs have you done to them over the years?
Yes, no, uh, I I won't do that math, but, uh, yeah, we we, uh, we did extensive renovations. Of the four uh buildings approximately eight years ago. Um, and uh, so, yeah, they were extensively, almost to the point got renovated. Uh, and they're in in good repair now. There are some things that we are going to upgrade as part of this work. As well, we met with the residents and sort of went over some of the highs and the lows and what we might be able to um add to the property at this time. Um, while we're doing this work. And then lastly, I'll say that, um. Uh, it it becomes an economy of scale here, although I'd love to hear the accolades about the management and how the properties are uh are operating currently. Uh, we do feel with the increase in density there, we'll even have more of a property management presence uh there on the. Uh, at 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 the the site, so we we think it's gonna really do well long term as, uh, you know, as what I'm getting at.
Okay, um, what about entrance onto? The Cranberry Highway. Um, what kind of impact on traffic are you expecting with forty?
As every developer says, right, minimal, um, but in truth, uh, I think that is the case here. It's the same access point that's there currently. Uh, we we feel like it's a, it's a. Easy in and out, uh, you know, good visibility and, uh, we don't anticipate it really being much of an impact at all. Um, of course, there's an impact whereas we're adding cars, but we don't think it's gonna be something that really would be noticeable.
Okay, um, I didn't count the number of parking spaces, but you're looking at forty units. How many parking spaces are you looking at?
We have forty-two parking spaces shown now.
Okay, on both, both the square and the L?
For the new, uh, yeah, I should say forty-two new parking spaces for the forty units.
Okay.
Um, I think the underlying zoning cost per one per per unit. In our experience, we generally see. Uh, point seven to point nine cars per senior unit on our other properties, so forty-two for forty. Seems seems like the the good place to be.
Yeah, and the existing properties, you know, as we've been shredding this with the residents and so on, you know, we feel it's overparked. And they concur. In other words, there there's, that's not one of the challenges that any of the residents are currently having. There's plenty of parking.
Okay, excellent. Um, the. I I don't know, you probably answered this. The units would be one bedroom, two bedroom?
They'd all be one bedroom.
They would all be one bedroom?
Yeah.
Okay, and would there be an elevator?
There'll be at least one elevator and possibly two, although for forty units, that come becomes expensive, but. The design guidelines the state has for senior affordable housing, they really prefer two elevators in the event that one were to. Become an act.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, I know that, well, I appreciate the fact that you are. Sort of flying this by us to to get our input and our questions. Um, that has not always been the case with the developers who come to this town, so thank you very much for that.
I have just one other question also.
Yeah, Alan, have you been waving your hand to speak again? Okay, yes, Miss Wertz.
Um, just quickly, you you are also your own management company, correct?
Uh, not for this particular site, no.
Okay.
We do manage in-house, uh, for typically our special, I I should say our supportive housing developments, which tend to be smaller. And, uh, truthfully, larger property management firms do not wanna manage them, so, uh, necessity, we've been managing our own. In-house, uh, specially supportive housing projects for over twenty years and I. I'll just say that it gives us great perspective, uh, in working with our uh management partners on.
Do you have a particular company you work for as a management organization?
Uh, the top, the company that's currently managing this property in partnership with us is Hall Keen.
So, um. Thank you for your presentation. We do not have this on here other than a presentation, but if you're looking for a letter of. Support, which is, I guess, what you are looking for, um, we would have to put it on a future agenda. If that would be okay with you.
Yep.
Alright, so, um. Do any of my members have any other questions? Yes, Mister Chadwick.
Can we, uh, I I don't have it in my packet, but can we get a copy of that presentation?
Yeah, you didn't get it because they only sent it today at four o'clock or something, so it is now in our office and yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
It's, uh, you should have it in your email too, Jared.
Yeah, it should have gone to your email. I bounced it to the email, but that's okay.
Oh, it it is there. I got it. I was able to follow along.
Okay, um, thank you very much. If do you, ladies or gentlemen, have any questions of us?
Uh, no, no, we'll just be sure that we have no, um, lithium batteries on site, uh, uh, after that. Somewhat stunning presentation earlier, forgive me.
Okay.
Uh, but thank you very much. I really appreciate your time and, um, we have been operating in in Wareham for. Honestly decades, uh, but, uh, this, uh, particular project is something that we're very excited about and, uh, when it comes to affordable housing in the region. Uh, we're always looking to do other things and, uh, so, uh, hopefully this won't be the only thing that we'll have in front of you. Uh, over the next several years.
Okay, so our next meeting would be September twelfth. Um, if you could just tomorrow or later on today, let us know. Who the letter would be addressed, it would be to you, Miss Humphreys or to you, Mister Corley. I'm not sure which one of you would actually want the letter.
Yeah, um, either way, I would say probably you could put it to, uh, Rob Corley. He's the CEO of maybe, so that makes sense.
Alright, so, um, I'll put it on the agenda for the twelfth of September and I guess I wanna, again, thank you for. Actually seeking our input because that has not always been the case with our developments in this town.
You know, thank you. Appreciate your time tonight. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you. Um, we're gonna go back to nine B. Um, Mister Camerano is moving his, uh. Pawn and secondhand dealership. Location from one side of Main Street to the other side of Main Street. And because we license both the pawn shop and the secondhand shop, it's appropriate for us to. Amend the license that we have granted to him. So he is moving from, um. Whatever the number is to two sixty-one Main Street. Interestingly enough, uh, two ninety Main Street. Is his current location. Interestingly enough, when we first. Huh?
Two ninety-four.
Two ninety?
Four Main Street.
Uh.
That's what I have here, two ninety-four Main Street.
For which?
Yeah.
The new location is two sixty-one, I believe.
Yeah, no, see, it it's interesting because when we first licensed this, we found. That there were abs- there were actually problems with what street. Number it really was on Main Street, cuz there were two like, anyway, so what we're doing this evening hopefully is. Um, allowing him to um be licensed. In the new location. He's not sure when he's going to be moving, but it will be before the year end. And therefore his license would be up to be renewed in December anyway, but I wanted to make sure that he could move and be properly licensed. He's heavily regulated by the state, as you know, um, and so I would accept a motion, please.
I moved to amend Dominic Camerano Junior Gateway Golden Pawn from two ninety-four Main Street. To move to Wareham, uh, excuse me, to two sixty-one Main Street in Wareham.
And can you add it be two ninety, two ninety and two ninety-four Main Street, please, in your motion?
To two ninety and two ninety-four Main Street, our Friday, ninety and two ninety-four.
Okay, thank you. Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll go for a roll call vote. Mister Chadwick?
Yes.
Mister Bessie?
Yes.
Mister Slaven?
Yes.
Miss Wertz?
Yeah.
And myself, yes. Um, I'll accept a motion on the possible vo- uh, the opt-out and reduction fees for the curbside building, billing.
So moved.
Second, motion made and seconded to approve the abatement recommendation. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mister Slaven?
Yes.
Mister Bessie?
Yes.
Miss Wertz?
Yes.
Mister Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Um, discussion and possible vote to approve temporary sign request from Buzzard Bay Coalition, which you have. And I have to say that, um, what they've done this time again was put the signs out before they got permission, but. I'll accept a recommendation or a motion.
Alright, I move to approve the temporary sign, uh, for Buzzard Bay Coalition.
As outlined on their application?
As outlined on their application. Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion on those, uh, that motion?
I just would, I just wish that not only them, but other organizations do get proper permission before they put signs out. Well, some organizations put a sign out once, get permission and then continue to put signs out all during the year without permission.
We are well aware of that. Anyway, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mister Bessie?
Yes.
Uh, Miss Wertz?
Yes.
Mister Slaven?
Yes.
And Mister Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself? Yes. Um, next is an application to approve a temporary sign from Turning Point. Um, the application is in front of you and it, they are sponsoring a. Fundraising event on September eighteenth, so they are looking to. Have, um, the signs as noted on your application. Miss Burke is here, but I don't think we need to. Ask her any questions, unless you have questions of her. Oh, okay, I'll accept a motion then.
Alright, I move to approve temporary sign request from Turning Point as outlined in their application.
Second.
Motion made a seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mister Bessie?
Yes.
Mister Slaven?
Yes.
Miss Wertz?
Yes.
Mister Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is done. Next, we have a discussion, possible vote to allow Rosario Lovell to host a benefit. For her brother. Her brother, um, unfortunately, years ago was bitten by a tick and he has had several health issues. Including basically being paralyzed. Um, both of them were high school graduates, so I. I know both of these people. Um, the ride is a motorcycle ride. You have the information in your packet. And actually, it's all on a state highway, but this is courtesy request and I would ask that you move to grant it, please.
Alright, I move to allow Rosi- I'm gonna butcher that. I'm sorry, Rosario. Rosario Lovell to host a benefit event, uh, for DFL eighteen.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, um, to grant. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote, Mister, uh, Mister Chadwick?
Yes, just real quick, uh, I believe I've talked to her before, um, and I'm glad that she's doing this and. Uh, if she needs anything from me whatsoever, please reach out. I'd be more than happy to help with whatever I can.
That's very generous of you. Um, her contact information obviously is in the packet and.
Yes, I have that.
It's, um, they're probably somewhat near contemporaries and, yeah. Donny, Donny's paid a big price. Any further discussion? Uh, hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mister Bessie?
Yes.
Mister Slaven?
Yes.
Miss Wertz?
Yes.
Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself, yes, it is done. Discussion on the possible vote on the middle school roof financing options. As you know, we are providing funding for the middle school roof repairs and if you've driven by. Um, you can see these people standing on the roof and doing the repairs. Um, you have a lot of information in the packet. Our bond council has suggested that we borrow the money from ourselves. In other words, take it out of, um, it it would be interfund about borrowing. And so the request is for a million two. And that's an updated version. The information is there, the total. Amount of money that we have in the stabilization fund is four, four point seven. Um, the loan authorization is up to a million five. We wanna go back into the bond market in descent in January, not before. The rates right now are terrible. So Mister Foster and Mister Sullivan have both recommended that we approve this. Interfund borrowing. Is there a motion to that?
I move to approve the interfa- funding, uh, for the middle school roof financing.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Um, I think I'm gonna ask you to make it. Uh, to approve the advance of funds in lieu of borrowing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve that funding. Is there any further discussion?
I have one.
Yeah, question?
Um. Actually, never mind.
Okay, i- it there's a lot of information in the packet. It's it's very unusual for us to do this, but. The rates are not in our favor right now. Um, I will go for a roll call vote. Mister Bessie?
Yes.
Miss Wertz?
Yes.
Mister Slaven?
Yes.
Mister Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Um, to to. Okay, community, we did the community events, okay? Discussion and possible vote for the select board to lay out candle paper. Way and to refer to the planning board for recommendations. Okay, you have in your packet. The routine, the way that we do, um, recommendations to accept town roads. First of all, the petition comes to the selectman, then we vote to, um, accept the intent to lay out. We refer the petition to the planning board and then we, they send it back to us and we can create a warrant article. And then we have two public hearings to adopt the order of layout and then we can, then it goes to town meeting. If town meeting approves it, it then comes back to us and we can choose to either accept it or not at that time. The article, because I haven't done one of these in law a long time. I sent it to the planning board first, um, so we have to authorize, um. We have to vote the intent to lay out the way. And refer it to the planning board. I've already alerted the planning board that I apologize that they have to talk about it again. Can I have that most motion, Mister Chadwick? It would be, um, vote to intent to lay out the way of candle paper, yeah.
I move. God, I'm sorry, I'm tired. Uh, I I moved to.
A lay.
So, I'm sorry, I'm gonna say so moved for right now, I'm.
That's okay. Okay, excellent. Um, there, so it is as written in the, um, documents in the packet. Is there any further discussion on the motion to vote our intent to lay out the way? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mister Bessie?
Yes.
Mister Slaven?
Oh, yes.
Miss Wertz?
Absolutely.
And Mister Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Understand that the, we've already seen it and there are four recommendations from the planning board. And I'm guessing that we would continue to recommend those.
My fault.
We did. Okay, um, discussion and I nine K J K L, it's L. Discussion possible vote regarding permitting of clothing collection bins. I've given you a lot of information in the packet. Um, several years ago, we created a bylaw that had to do with collection bins, junk bylaw, et cetera, and. In essence, one of the things that was created at that time was the fact that we didn't wanna see any more. Really messy collection bins and there are in fact only three licensed in the town of Wareham. And they are the two at Spalain Field and one at the high school. Um, I asked Dr. DeAndrea to tell me how much. Uh, money was raised from those collection bins. Those three collection bins are. Um, monitored on a weekly basis. The clothing and stuff donated to them is bailed and sent to. I'm not sure where, but it is not inside the United States. So. You may want to think about this longer, but the, the law has changed in Massachusetts. You can't throw textiles out. And what has happened in the past on all collection bins is that they've become dump sites. Unfortunately, the two at the top of Spalain Field have been dump sites and. They are, our bylaw, which I've given you a copy of, is very specific. Um, if the junk is still there after five days, we can find and all this other stuff. The three. Bins that are permitted and they are permitted every year are permitted to the school. We don't charge a fee. And the funds go to one of the PTAs and I'm sorry, I just don't remember which one. Um, so I would ask that you. Sort of reinforce the. The um, desire to permit only those three and possibly not permit them further. Um. After the end of this year, because. We, in essence, got rid of about twenty collection bins in the town of Wareham and they were, they were junk piles, as you know. Questions, comments, concerns, Mister Chadwick, I know you have some. I don't know the dollar amount and I asked Doctor DeAndrea.
Uh, I, I'm going to ask that. We hold off on voting on this uh, until we know the dollar amount for that is. Uh, given to the PTA, uh, I don't believe that we should be. Taking any money away from them, even if it's. You know, a hundred bucks a week or whatever it might be for those.
That's not what I'm asking for, Mister Chadwick. I'm asking that we allow no others except these three through December.
My apologies, well. All right, my apologies.
And I, I, I did, as I say, I tried to get the figure for you. They are licensed through December. We have an opportunity in December. To relicense them. So we're not taking it away now.
Yeah.
It, does that satisfy your concerns?
That's fine.
Okay, any other questions or concerns? Yes, Ms. Words.
I, I just have a comment, um. I know these things are terrible, these bins. I see what they're like. I won't put anything in them most of the time because it'll never get used. We've lost a lot of the. Um, like Goodwills that used to take this stuff and use it and I. I really am bothered about. Wasting and you know, uh, because other than we do this, we set it on flames and burn it. And um. And there's got to be a better use for it. I, I'm just wondering as we approach. December. Um. That perhaps we were, talk with some of the churches and see if there's appropriate places where.
There are several places already. There are three churches in town that accept clothing donations and have. Uh, monthly shopping sprees and Turning Point also.
Perfect.
Accept the donations. So you're good point and there are.
All taken care of.
Yes.
Yeah, so the real issue then is the money, yeah.
Yeah, Savers in Plymouth takes stuff, um, there, there's. Goodwill or Salvation Army in Hyannis. There's still places that take it, but throwing it in the trash is illegal now and. Okay, so can I have a motion to? Um. Limit the. Collection bins in the town of Wareham to zero, except for the three that are currently permitted at the school.
I move to.
And motion in a second. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, I'll go for a roll call vote. Mister Chadwick.
Yes.
Bessie.
Yes.
Mister Slaven.
Yes.
My, Ms. Words.
Yes.
Myself, yes, okay. Next, um, the Boston Kane tradition. You all have a copy of the picture of the head of the Boston Kane. This tradition was started in nineteen oh nine, the publisher of the newspaper named the Boston Post. It was a, it was a marketing ploy and he created seven hundred canes. They were ebony with gold tops. And they were inscribed with the name of the town at the top. As you can see, the picture I've given you is Burlington, Mass. Um, and the canes were given to the oldest resident of the town. And when that person died, the cane came back to the town. And was then given to the next person who happened to be the oldest person. There are about um, four hundred canes left. In Maine, New Hampshire and Massachusetts, which were the three states that this was. Um, started in. Uh, originally, it was only the oldest living male. But in nineteen thirty, they wised up and decided that they would include females and in fact, several of our. Um, honorees have been females. The last person who held the cane was Mary Rose and she'd lived to be, what, Alan, hundred and one?
No, I think she was one oh four.
One oh four, okay. Anyway, I'd like to revive this tradition. I happen to know that there is at least one individual who's a hundred and three in this town right now. Um, so I, I just would like a vote of support. To reinstate this. We would actually go to the person's house and do a, a, you know, an in-person presentation. Um, I'm also trying to find a place to make what I would call um. Uh, replica canes, so that when the person dies. The cane, the big, the real cane comes back to the town, but the, the family is able to keep the replica.
It's a little town.
Yeah. May I have a motion to support um, the reviving of that tradition?
I make a, excuse me, I move to support the revive of the Boston Post Kane tradition.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mister Bessie.
Yes.
Mister Slaven.
Yes.
Words.
Yes.
Mister Chadwick.
Yes.
Myself, yes, okay. Uh, discussion impossible vote to support a Veterans Day parade. I'm going to let Mister Slaven weigh in on this one. Um. Because Mister Slaven. Decided a year ago that this was a great idea and then. Within the past month, he was able to con a whole lot of us into this great idea. Mister Slaven.
It's very simple. We're going to basically reinstate. Uh, a Veterans Day parade on eleven eleven twenty twenty-three and continue going forward. Board of Selectmen, of course, we cannot, uh, you know, take money in, et cetera, so the uh. Uh, the militia, uh, Howie Smith and Company, uh, has thankfully stepped up. To be a five oh one C three to basically receive funds, et cetera. We've got, uh. The Community Events Committee has agreed to uh. Supply funding for certain tax expenses that are allowed. We have Cape Cod five. Heck, you know, helping us out plus other areas and we have many people. Uh, who have done works before and have stepped up already. It's pretty well put together. It's a real rush time wise, but. We're trying to, you know, again, bring back uh. The community and to show, you know, the tightness of the community and the importance of the veterans. And it's not just the military veterans, it's, it's people who, you know, first responders, et cetera, and. We really need to thank these people for what they do and show them their appreciation. That is really well deserved. And that's really about it. It's, it's an important thing. Uh, it's kind of been let go. It, it needs to come back.
It was let go unfortunately because of COVID, so we haven't had one in basically six years. Although there have been virtual ones and you heard about that in the certificate of appreciation to Mister White. So would I ask for a vote to um, support the Veterans Day parade?
Right, I move to support Veterans Day parade.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to support the Veterans Day parade. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mister Chadwick.
Yes.
Mister Slaven.
Yes.
Ms. Words.
Yes.
Mister Bessie. And myself, yes, it is four zero zero. And um, there obviously needs to be a special permit. Uh, special events permit, which you already have in the front of you, which is to grant the town of Wareham and the militia. A uh, Veterans Day parade, which would start at Bessie Park and go to Center Park. And uh, the program would be held at Center Park and the meal we hope will be at a local church. The congregational church. Um, there's a committee of. I think it's six, six or seven people who have been working on a weekly basis to get this project going and it's been a lot of work. So I'd accept a motion to grant the town of Wareham a special events permit to host the Veterans Day parade. Previously, it's been hosted by the Veterans Council, but. It is not going to be that way.
Okay, I move to grant the town of Wareham's uh, special events permit to host the Veterans Day parade on November eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to grant the special events permit. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mister Chadwick.
Yes.
Bessie.
Yes.
Mister Slaven.
Yes.
Ms. Words.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mister Bessie, I'm going to ask if you would like to be added to the vote to support a Veterans Day parade. I'm not sure you were there.
Yeah, sorry, I was having issues with my uh.
That's fine. So I can count you as a, as a yes?
Yes.
Thank you, it's unanimous. Okay, liaisons. You have a list of the liaisons and what we've talked about before is the need to. Have more of us know more by being liaisons to committees. Um, Alan and I have. At least ten or eleven apiece. Um, I understand that two of you work full time and have children and schools and other commitments. Um, so I'm going to go down quickly to see if anybody would like to change the representation audit. I'm, I'm going to go on that. As well, how about that? Alan.
Sure.
Okay, um, Board of Assessors would be liaison as Ron, is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Board of Health is Jared.
Yes.
Okay, Capital Planning is Alan. Actually, are you a member?
No.
No, okay, liaison. Um, I think I'll join you on that one too, unless somebody else wants to jump in. This is.
I can join that.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, Tricia. Um, then I won't. Uh, the Regional Refuge District, myself, Amanda Cobb and Dave Minard are all representatives. We have been appointed through our terms. Cemetery Commissioners, I'm the liaison unless anybody else wants to hang around. Nope. Um, Community Events. The member, we just put Jared there, right?
Yep.
Okay, Community Preservation is myself and Tricia. Is that okay with everyone? Excellent. Conservation is myself. Um, anybody else want to jump in there?
Judy, I go to those anyway.
I know you do. So why don't I put you down as a, as a, well, it'll be you and me. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, excellent. Okay, thank you. I know you go. Um, Council on Aging is myself and Alan. Anybody want to jump in? Nope. Okay, Finance Committee, myself and Alan. And the really good news is the Finance Committee actually has liaisons to all boards and committees in this town. Which is what we used to do a long time ago and they revived that tradition. Anybody else want to go on that?
Yeah, I'd be interested in that.
Okay.
Then I'm not going to have any time to sleep after all this, but. That might keep me out of trouble.
Gulf Course Advisory is Jared.
Yes.
Um, Historic District is Tricia.
Yeah, and those, those two or three are joined together because um, Angie now runs them more or less the meetings at the same time. It's uh, you know, the, the uh. This Robert, Mister Blair comes and those meetings happen simultaneously. So once you're there, you're there.
Okay, so you're going to stay, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because those two will stay together.
Okay, Joint Transportation Delicate is Alan. Did, do we have somebody as an alternative?
No, there's no alternatives there.
Is there supposed to be an alternative?
No.
Okay, then I'll take it off the list. Uh, Library Board of Trustees is myself and Tricia unless anybody else wants to learn. What they do over there? No, okay. Open Space is me. Now, okay, Planning Board, Tricia, I know you go to virtually all of them and Alan. Um, Plymouth County Advisory is Alan.
I would like.
What?
Uh, I would like to learn that one if.
Plymouth County Advisory.
If Mister Slaven wouldn't mind. Reshadowing him and then.
There's no, unfortunately, there's no uh. Alternative and Plymouth County, I think I'm uh, I chair the advisory board.
But can he, can he attend the meetings?
He could attend the meetings in Plymouth, uh, but could not vote or do anything.
Right, but he could, he could.
I can learn for that.
Yeah, okay, so I'm going to put him, I'm going to put him down as a liaison.
He'll be a really big shadow to Alan.
Keep him out of the sun.
Ron, that was low. Uh, Recycling is Ron. Road Commissioners is me. School Committee is me and Jared.
Good luck.
Okay. Sewer.
Uh, I'd uh. I would be interested in jumping in on that.
Which, the sewer?
The sewer.
Bless you, my child.
I got toilet paper for you.
I have plenty of that.
Okay, this is going to be a really important one. Obviously, they're going to be coming back to our town meeting, so thank you, Ron. Uh, Southeastern Mass commuter rail task force is Alan. Can somebody, can he, can somebody shadow you?
Not really, no, no.
Okay.
It's only, it's only once or twice a year anyways.
Okay. Uh, Serped is you and Mike King, is that correct?
Uh, actually, I think uh.
I thought it was Sherry.
Sherry has, uh, Mike asked to step down, there's, there's no alternate step.
Okay. Um. Veterans Council is Alan. Um, Affordable Housing, Tricia is a member, so we don't need a liaison.
Correct.
Cultural Council is me. Redevelopment, both Ron and I are members. And ZBA is Alan and Tricia and that makes sense because Tricia's on the other land use boards.
Yeah, the planning and history and conservation.
Okay, all right, so those will be posted as changes. Um, Town Administrator was excused for personal reasons this evening. Um, and so we'll go to liaison reports, um, Mister Bessie.
Uh, nothing tonight.
Mister Slaven.
Nothing.
Ms. Words.
I don't have anything tonight.
Mister Chadwick.
Uh, I just have a board comment, um. Uh, it should be a quick one here. Uh, the reason why I'm so tired tonight is uh, obviously. Uh, some people already know, I was one of the wonderful. People last night that had to go to Toby Hospital uh, with my son. Um, he's perfectly fine, just not drinking enough fluids. Um. We have heard everybody's. Uh, complaints. We've seen all the Facebook posts uh, about Toby and uh. Just to let the public know, we are working with them. We are talking to them uh, to try and help them. Make everything better for our community.
Thank you, Mister Chadwick, appreciate it. Um, my only report would be the parade and again, there's a website. And there's a um, town email and it probably is, it's as a front page of Wareham Week article. Uh, so yes, we're looking for a lot of support from the town. And then I'm going to accept a motion on two sets of minutes at the same time, Mister Chadwick.
All right, I uh, just lost my paperwork here. Jesus, I am really not.
August first and August tenth.
All right, I move to approve the August first and August tenth uh, minutes.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to approve two sets of minutes. Any further discussion on those? Hearing none, I'll go for a roll call vote. Mister Bessie.
Yes.
Mister Slaven.
Yes.
Ms. Words.
Yes.
Mister Chadwick.
Yes.
And myself. Um, oh, let's, we have a problem here. Fincom and CPC are on the same night. Ms. Words, I just got that note from somebody. And zoning is also on Wednesday.
Yeah, and so what happens, and I've had a couple of them like that this past year, is I rotate, I look at their cap, at their. Agendas and I try and rotate every third week or every second week.
Okay, so should we put? Let's see, that was, what did I say? Zoning, does somebody else want to hop on there as well?
Zoning Board of Appeals?
Yeah.
I'll take that.
Good. Okay, Alan, I'm going to let you off the hook on that one.
That's fine.
Okay, so this will be Jared. Um, and what was the other one that I said? Zoning. Zoning. CPC. CPC.
Yeah.
So you'll be all set on the rotating because
Those two, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that works.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, this town has a um, it has a, a love for Wednesday night meetings. There's almost no Thursday nights. Of course, Friday town halls closed down.
Okay, um, is there any
Interesting.
Further business to come before this board? I want to thank you for, you, you, you had some really great comments tonight, um, engaged in some really good discussion on the two presentations that we had, so that's excellent. Motion, Slavin?
Motion to adjourn.
Not applicable?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It is adjourned. Thank you very much, Wareham. Good night. The next meeting will be September twelfth. Have a safe holiday.